Good evening and welcome to the Henry Ford College Board of Trustees Meeting. Tonight's meeting is a regular scheduled meeting. Today is November 25th, 2024. It is 7:00 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Trustee Dambrosio.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Moses.
Here.
Trustee Pachikov.
Here.
Trustee Thorp.
Here.
Trustee Watts here. Cherberry.
Here. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes for the following Board of Trustees Meeting. Board of Trustees Building and Site Committee Meeting, October 21st, 2024. Board of Trustees Policy Committee Meeting, October 21st, 2024. Regular Board of Trustees Meeting, October 21st, 2024. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move to approve these minutes.
So move.
Support.
Motion moved by trustee Dambrosio, supported by trustee Pachikov. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Are there any objections to the motion? Motion is approved. Next item, please.
President's items.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon, trustees. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing us to move the meeting date in November. I just will remind you that that will shrink the time between trustee, Board of Trustees Meeting. So we're happy to be here tonight, but then again, in two weeks, we'll be back together here. So thank you for adjusting your schedule. My comments this evening will be even shorter than normal because we have a couple of presentations from some of my colleagues that I'm excited to get right over to as quickly as possible. But before I do that, I'll tell you just about a couple of exciting things that we have happening on our campus, mostly as a reminder. The first is you all have, trustees received an invitation to the nursing pinning ceremony, which is, and it's Paul, I saw him earlier. It's Paul, it's just a little feedback. Thank you very much, Mr. Minnich. Usually, there's a lot of feedback when I'm talking.
Not always positive.
Not always positive. In fact, you can make the feedback louder. All right. So dad jokes aside, Henry Ford College Nursing Program Pinning is on the 13th of December at 6:00 PM in our Athletics Memorial Building. Trustees, we would be glad to have you there. It's a wonderful event. It's at 6:00 PM, and that is one, two, almost three weeks from now. I know many of you are there. Trustee Thorpe is a staple there. In fact, I'll probably convince you trustee Thorpe to talk at that event, maybe have another rendition from trustee Watts. It's a...
I'm out of town.
You're out of town. I'll record it, and I'll have you give another one of the...
We'll put it on the big screen.
In fact, you told me that trustee Thorpe, I apologize. Also trustees, we've been working hard on the strategic plan, the update. You're going to get a presentation on that, but I'll just say that I'm very excited to say that that work has happened quickly and collaboratively. I'm also excited to report to you that there's a lot of work happening on our campus as we begin the process of planning the Southeast Michigan Student Success Center, which might be described as the SEMC. I know some folks have questioned the acronym there. I'm open to changing the name, especially if you got several million dollars and you want it to be the Pelichkov. The Pelichkov Building of Student Success.
Don't hold your breath.
But in any event, we've had several meetings across the campus, engendered a lot of discussion. The last rendition of that was just last week. We had a town hall that the architect firm and myself led, and we had discussions about that. I've had a lot of feedback from a lot of different constituencies, mostly internal to the college, getting ideas about what we need, what we want, and what we would have if we had everything we wanted. That process is continuing. One thing I've told my colleagues, particularly those that are feeling excited but also anxious about the outcome, is that nothing has been decided yet. We're in the process of visioning the project, and of course, trustees, if you have interest in that, please let me know. I will say there was one trustee, trustee McDonald, who was at the town hall. I appreciate you being there. If you do have interest, trustees, you feel free to ask trustee McDonald what her take on that was. I haven't had a chance to talk with you trustee McDonald about that, but I would welcome your comments either now or after this event. But trustees, I'll just tell you, like any big project, this has engendered a lot of excitement, but also a lot of strong feelings, which is okay. It's part of the collaborative process. And just for context, we've done a lot of construction projects at Henry Ford College over the last six and a half years, a lot of them, none quite this big, but we've got a pretty good track record of having designed and constructed projects on Henry Ford College's campus for years before me, but certainly during the last six and a half years. And I reiterated that at the town hall, just at the very least to say, every project needs a lot of hard work and a lot of collaboration, a lot of planning, but this won't be the first one we've tried to do while still trying to deliver educational services. And just for your reference, we did an entire expansion of the technical building. That happened during the pandemic and after it. We retrofitted every single building on this campus for new lights and windows and roofs, and did a geothermal process that put trenches all throughout the campus. We renovated the student center for an area for new student activities area and the Detroit Promise. We are in the process of doing the second renovation for the athletics building. Both of those had disruptions for locker rooms and classroom buildings. We did a complete retrofit of many faculty offices in the liberal arts building for a new honors program. All of those, most you didn't hear much about until they were done and we celebrated them. We're hopeful that we'll be able to accomplish that. I will acknowledge, most of those projects, the biggest of which were about $22 million, pale in comparison to the 90-some million dollars will be, and two buildings will be tearing down. So while those are useful for comparison, this is the largest project we've ever had, and so I'm excited to keep planning it, but I also want you to know that we're working together as a college to try and make the best that we can of this really exciting new project. And with that, I'll take any questions from trustees, because I don't feel the need to do a long report, because you'll see me in two weeks.
Trustee Pachikov.
Well, I actually did hear from an employee after that town hall, and she wasn't good with the town hall. She was surprised by, she had expected more people to attend. I don't know how many were in attendance, but I explained to her too that I hoped, and I reiterated this over and over again, that we will be delivering information in multiples of ways, and that hopefully that if she keeps looking for it, she'll be able to find updates throughout either the website or hopefully signage as we start moving onto campus with actual projects, because she works in the Welcome Center now, and there still is a bit of buzz about what's going on between what renovations are occurring right now, which she's actually not unhappy with, but she's also concerned about where everybody's going to be moving, just like everyone else. So, and I told her, I said, "As long as you didn't ask to pick up the paint and carpet, I'm good with whatever you contributed." So, and she said, "Oh yeah," she knew that. So just to reiterate again, I hope that we continue to make every effort to keep everybody up to date, because we're not going to be meeting everybody in the same room, so to speak.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that trustee Pelichkov, because it reminded me of something I wanted to say that I omitted. We are trying to find every possible way to communicate with stakeholders, at the very least so that they can give us feedback about what they envision for this project. I've been pretty clear that our goal will be to hear everyone and to try to deliver on everything we can, recognizing there's no way we can meet every request. We have launched a website for this project. You're welcome to check that out. We just announced we'll be outlining a form, an electronic form, so constituents like yourself and our teammates and even community members can do asynchronous feedback about what they believe is important in this process. And if there are other ways, I've said this to my teammates, particularly those who will be living and working in this space, if there are other ways that we haven't contemplated that they can have their voices heard, I'm open to that, and I'll be very, very interested in meeting those needs. But it is an ongoing process.
Trustee McDonald.
Yeah, I think in the town hall, the one thing that was definitely emphasized was the fact that this is an ongoing process. Nothing is really taking place yet. We're in the planning stages, and that's part of the reason why we're having this town now, so we can get your input, your information, get some, you know, so all the stakeholders and people involved, we will know how they feel about things. And that doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to get your way, but we are interested in everyone's input, and we have not already laid out a plan, and you're just, you know, here for that purpose, that we're going to just tell you, this is what we're doing. So I think that was made quite clear in the town hall.
Anybody else?
No, it's just meeting expectations where they're at, so that we don't have the disgruntledness after the fact.
Right.
Great, thank you. Next item, please.
Special reports, audit presentation for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. Vice President Ted House.
Well, another year gone by. Audit completed. Dana Coombs, I'm glad we're in to do the presentation, which...
Yes, great. Good evening, everyone.
I'm Dana Coombs. I served as the audit partner on this year's audit. We just met with the audit committee prior to this meeting, so trustee Moses, trustee McDonald, and trustee Watts to cover the audit in detail, and so today just wanted to provide some highlights, financial highlights. I'll start by saying another great audit, unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can receive from your auditors, that your financial statements are free of material error. So that was great to see. And as a result of our audit, we also did not have any college findings or the federal compliance findings on student financial aid. So great audit, and the team was very much prepared for us and collaborated with us throughout the process, so appreciated that. So just wanted to provide some highlights for the college financial statements this year. The first slide includes the net position for the college, also known as net assets or equity of the college. It includes both '24, '23, and '22, and you'll notice about halfway down, the total net position for the college as of June 30th, '24 was just under $25 million in comparison to '23 and '22, which were deficits at that point. Deficits were a result of the net pension and OPEB liabilities that are significant and are required to be reported on the college's financial statements. But you'll notice that the second to last line includes those liabilities combined, and so this year it's $129 million in comparison to last year of $145 million. And so those liabilities continue to go down each year as a result of a number of different factors, including investment performance that we're all likely seeing in our 401K plans. They're also seeing that for the pension and OPEB liability, as well as funding from the state has continued to increase. So overall, great picture for the college's net position this year, and continues to improve. The next one is net position, but only for the general fund. The column to the far left includes the general fund excluding those liabilities that I mentioned, and so last year it ended at $16.8 million, and this year it ended at $18.4, so a million-six increase year over year, which is also great to see. The far right includes what the general fund looks like with those pension liabilities, but a lot of those inputs and factors are difficult for the college to control, so that's why we like focusing on that far-left column. The next one is unrestricted net position. So this is unrestricted dollars, which by definition means the college can use those funds at their discretion and aren't restricted by any means. And so general fund, as I mentioned, did increase to $18.4 million. And then the auxiliary fund is the bookstore, cafeteria, and those funds also are at $4.5 million. And so when you look at those combined, they're at $23, which is a $1.2 million increase over the prior year. So again, good news there. The next slide includes a breakdown of the general fund revenue for the year, and so total revenue is $113.7 million. Most of that, 44%, is in tuition and fees, followed by state appropriations in yellow at 38%, and then taxes at 14% in red. The chart on the right includes peer institution averages, and so that would be like Mott Community College, Schoolcraft, Delta, Grand Rapids, similar size to Henry Ford. And you'll notice, as in previous years, their tuition and fee numbers are lower because their property tax base is higher at 37% in comparison to the college at 14%. But I'd say their tuition rates, Henry Ford is very consistent amongst their peers, so, and this is consistent with what we've seen in previous years. The next slide includes general fund expenditure breakdown with that same comparison to the peer institutions. The most significant expenditures being an instruction and instructional support, and so those, if you combine, are at 57% in comparison to 55% for your peer institutions, so relatively consistent year over year, as well as those other breakdowns also very consistent. We've also had that small pie chart as well that breaks down administrative expenses and services, you know, most of that being in personal and other costs, but also like to identify that bad debt expense is 1% of that, which has remained relatively flat over the last five years, which is great to see, because that number had been previously higher. And then the last slide here is just the year-over-year, looking back at revenue over total expenses in the general fund. And so what we like to see is that blue line, the revenue line, is higher than what the expenses are, so that your revenue is higher each year. And so it continues to be that way, and then includes also a prediction of what '25 looks like. And you'll see a slight dip. That is because the college did receive one-time revenue for, from state appropriations for specific purposes that isn't expected to recur into the future. Any questions?
Great job. No questions.
All right.
Did you need to ask? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Discussion items, Board of Trustees Policy Updates. Trustee Moses.
So, the email was sent to you with, is the mic working?
Yes.
Okay. An email was sent to you with all of the policies to be approved for next meeting. One policy that combined other policies is the employment of administrative and supportive staff that's going to combine all of the four policies, existing policies, that are going to be also at the same time be rescinded. And then we also had a discussion last meeting on the disposition of property policy, so that's for review as well. That's going to be coming to the board next meeting.
Are there any questions, trustee Moses? Great, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item, citizen participation, citizen wishes. Oh, I'm sorry, city plan 2025, 2027, board report number 4761, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Chairman, I would like to invite two of my colleagues to the podium here, and as they make their way up, I'll introduce them and give you just a little bit of level-setting. One is Vice President Lori Gonko, who you all know very well, but you may not know as well her partner in this presentation. You may. It's our colleague and faculty member, Dr. Michael Hill. He was elected by his colleagues in the faculty to be the chair of the Faculty Senate, and he and I were the co-chairs of a group that took the task about six weeks ago, I think. He may correct me on the timeline. But at some point in the last two months, Dr. Hill and I convened a group whose task was to review and potentially revise the strategic plan that you all approved a little more than two years ago. And so he and I went about leading that team forward, and I've asked he and Dr. Gonko to make a presentation to you all that will propose what I would describe as revisions to the strategic plan that you approved a couple of years ago. This, of course, is a discussion item, and with your feedback from it here today and in the subsequent two weeks, I'll be asking you all to consider approving it as the new rendition of the Henry Ford College Strategic Plan. But before we get there, I wanted you to have a chance to hear from vice, or not vice, co-chair, Dr. Hill, and Vice President Dr. Gonko. I believe Dr. Hill will start, and then Dr. Gonko. Is that right?
Yeah, I think you almost gave me a promotion there.
Is that what you want?
No. Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees. I wrote down a few comments, keep me from saying inappropriate jokes or dad jokes, which may be inappropriate.
Dad jokes come out a lot here, Dr. Hill.
As the Chair of the Faculty Senate, it is my honor to announce to you that the Faculty Senate has endorsed the strategic plan for 2025 to 2027. As co-chair of the Strategic Plan Review Committee, I can assure you that faculty committee members were engaged and integral to the review of the strategic plan, and they consulted with their colleagues, with the colleagues they represented as we progressed through the plan. I can also assure you that every member of the Strategic Plan Review Committee was equally engaged, and we can see the members of the Strategic Plan Review Committee up on the screen right now. Our experience on the committee revealed a community of faculty, administrators, and student support representatives who practice collaboration, mutual support, and a wholehearted dedication to this college and our students. Henry Ford College has a long and proud history of productive shared governance, and the way this committee worked exemplified that history. Our group presented, listened, discussed, debated, and created, all with a singular vision of providing the best education we can for our students. We are especially excited to present to you a strategic plan that is more focused and intent on working towards the success of all our students, but that also pays attention to our need as a college to expand the access and opportunity for our students of underserved populations. I want to express a special thanks to President Cavalluna for his role as co-chair alongside me, and for his collaborative and team-building style. I believe he would agree with me that this strategic plan makes us confident that we are on a path to a more successful future for all of our students. And I'll hand it off to Dr. Gonko, who's got slides.
And in fact, these slides may look familiar, and in a nod towards the continuity from the previous plan to this one, I took the plan that we presented to you two years ago and updated those exact same slides, so not a shortcut, grand gesture towards showing continuity between one plan to the next. So before we get into describing the proposed modifications, I'd like to begin by sharing what we do not intend to change. You know, regardless of any of the modifications that we propose, student success has remained and will continue to remain as the center of our strategic plan, really the heart and soul of all of the work that we're doing here at HFC. And this graphic may look familiar to you. This was created during the last strategic planning cycle for the '22 to '24 strategic plan. In addition to showing student success as the center, it also shows our four strategic priorities of access, retention, completion, and transfer. And these priorities mirror the life cycle of our students' journey here at HFC, and so we intend to keep these moving forward. It also highlights our commitment to advancing belonging, inclusion, diversity, and equity, or what we call our abide commitments. These commitments really function kind of as the strategic and cultural foundation for student success here at the college, and they're kind of encircling, you know, all of our work here. We also have our abide statement, and while I will not read it to you in its entirety, this does maintain the same statement that we began with during the last planning cycle. And you'll see that there's elements woven into here from our mission statement, from our welcoming college statement, and our institutional values, all of which are going to continue to remain kind of guideposts or north star for our strategic planning work with student success. Getting then into the priorities and the goal language, what you will see throughout here is mostly just mild tweaks to some of the language and a refresher of the metrics that we're using. Again, the priorities are going to remain the same. You'll also note that with the exception of this first priority, all of our priorities in the last iteration had two goals. We've streamlined and focused our work even further, so that now we only have one goal associated with each priority. Again, this one being kind of a unique exception that I'll explain as we go through this. So priority one is access, and for us, being an open-access institution means that we will increase enrollment, especially for underrepresented and historically underserved student populations. Our first goal is to increase enrollment of Black and African-American students by 10% per year for two years. This is a population that has been declining at HFC over the last maybe eight to 10 years or so, even though we're in close geographic proximity to areas that have high concentrations of African-American citizens. And this was a goal in our last plan, and candidly, we did not quite meet that goal. So here, we have refined the metric a little bit, and we are kind of doubling down, if you will, on our efforts to serve this student population. Our second goal is similar, to increase enrollment of Hispanic and Latino students by 10% per year for two years. This, in contrast to our African-American student population, the Hispanic population at HFC has remained relatively stagnant at about 3% over the last several years, again, though we are in close geographic proximity to neighborhoods that have high concentrations of Hispanic citizens. And so this, again, is us focusing our efforts even further on this student population. Now, the committee did have a pretty robust conversation about whether or not we would want to have these two goals combined into one, as we did with the other goals of the plan. And after much debate, as Mike described, we did come to the conclusion that two separate goals was appropriate in this instance to signify the importance of these two distinct student populations, as well as to acknowledge the fact that likely the strategies, the tactics, the initiatives that we are going to be undertaking to meet these goals are going to be different for these two student populations. And so the committee felt, at the end of the day, that having two goals was appropriate in this instance. Our second priority is retention. Here is a minor wording change from what we had in the last, in the last plan. HFC will achieve improved and equitable retention rates for all students by increased credit accumulation reinforced through proactive, student-focused support and intervention programs. And that's a bit of a mouthful, but it can be summarized in what Vice President Diamond likes to say, is us very intentionally helping our students to achieve more credits faster. We know that credit accumulation and credit momentum are some of the biggest predictors of ultimate student completion and student success. And so our goal for this priority is to increase the percentage of our first-time full-time students who are earning 24 or more credits in their first year by 4%, and then increase the percentage of part-time students who earn 15 or more credits in their first year. Our full-time students are, of course, taking 12 or more credits each semester, and so we want them to be successful in all of those credits and earn the full 24 in their first year to set them on that good path, that good trajectory to completion of their credential. Our part-time students are taking, of course, fewer than 12 credit hours per semester, but 15 credits in a year would still be a pretty good pathway for them to achieve their 60-credit-hour associate degree in a relatively reasonable amount of time. Our third priority is completion. HFC will increase credential attainment and close completion equity gaps across all student populations. For us here, completion is not just an associate's degree. We're also including certificates in here, and so the language is credential attainment, not specific to degrees. We also want to, again, close those equity gaps across our student populations. One of the things that we do see unfortunately with our completion rates is that not all of our students are achieving completion at the same rate, and so we want to equalize that across the board and ensure that all students, regardless of their background, are able to complete here at HFC. Our goal is similar to what we included in the last plan. We want to increase the total number of certificates and degrees awarded while also raising that institutional graduation rate above 25%. And this one has kind of a really, this is the most exciting new metric, I think, because we get to brag on the fact that not only did we achieve what we set out to do in the last plan, which was to increase our graduation rate to 15%, we did that, and we blew by that, and we're now sitting at about 21%. So we're very happy about that progress, thanks to the collaborative efforts of a lot of people here on campus. The one thing about graduation rate, though, this is the federal I-Peds rate that we report on an annual basis, it's what we call a lagging indicator. It means that essentially, there's a big delay in when we gather the data... It means that essentially, there's a big delay in when we gather the data and when we report it to the federal government based upon the methodology that we are required to adhere to. And because of that, we also want to keep our finger on the pulse of how we're doing on this metric, and so we will continue to monitor semester by semester that total number of certificates and degrees awarded. Our last priority is transfer. We want to achieve improved and equitable results regarding successful and seamless transfer to a four-year college or university for all students who seek to attain a bachelor's or other advanced degree. The key here with this priority is really that transfer to a four-year institution. And our goal is very simple. We want to increase HFC's transfer-out-with-award rate to 50%. And what we're talking about here is the number of students who leave HFC to continue on their educational pathway with that credential in hand, with that associate's degree in hand as they move on. We have, you know, always had a broad kind of array of students who come here for one semester and transfer, might come here and earn 40 credits and then transfer. But at the end of the day, we really want our students to be able to enjoy the value that they will get from that associate's degree as they move on and continue on their bachelor's pathway. And so we hope to get at least half of our students who leave here to go to a four-year to do so with that, you know, credential in hand. And so those are the proposed modifications that we are making to the plan. You'll see, again, a lot of similarity to what we had in the 22 to 24 plan, and that was very intentional. The last iteration of this work, we really did start with a blank, you know, sheet of paper and really, you know, do something very different with how we were approaching strategic planning. Now, we want to just increase kind of our focus and continue on that student success work that we were very excited to begin. So this is our deep commitment to continuing on that pathway. And with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Trustee Petchikoff?
I might be going down the wrong path on this one, but under the retention, how we're defining the goals, first-time, full-time students, we have a large number of dual-enrolled students who will be coming here already with a number of credits. Are we, I'm assuming they're not who you're targeting in this particular statement?
That is correct, and mostly that's to do with kind of some in-the-weeds data definitions. Our dual enrollment students are not included as degree-seeking students, and that's by the way in which we're required to report them. So if a dual-enrolled student is taking, you know, X number of credits, they're classified as dual-enrolled until they flip into their first full, their first semester at HFC. Then they would be included in the student population.
So would they, because it says first-time, full-time, and I'm assuming...
They're still included as first-time.
Okay, that, that was one of my questions, is how are we tracking them? Because I would like to see that we're having success with retaining students who already had, had the advantage of coming here as high schoolers and hopefully would continue on to a completion with a degree of some sort, so...
Yeah.
That, that explains that to me. Thank you.
Trustee Mosib?
I just want to comment and say those are amazing goals with ambitious goals to achieve. Any of them here that you see are too ambitious?
We thought about that, you know, at length as we went through this, because in the last iteration of the plan, we did admittedly find that we had some goals that may have been a little bit too ambitious, particularly as it relates to the access priority. So here, we've refined our thinking and done more statistical analysis in order to determine what would be achievable versus, you know, you want something that's going to be a stretch goal so that you're going to work towards it, but not something that is going to be out of grasp, of course.
And will we receive some kind of a check-in, say, semester by semester of how we're doing toward these goals?
We can absolutely do that, although I will say some of the, the data components that we included these are something that we report on, on an annual basis. So if nothing else, we would at least have the most up-to-date data at the end of each academic year. Right now, we do have some dashboards that are available on our website that are highlighting our progress towards these goals, and we can make sure that you have the link to that.
Trustee Thor?
I would like to thank everybody who was on this committee, because it gives the Board very specific, measurable goals, and that's one thing that the Board always has a hard time trying to decide, how are things progressing? Are we reaching those milestones? So thank you to everybody who was a part of that.
I'm going to follow up on Trustee Mosib's questions. I'm happy that we, under access, we kept the goals separate. I mean, I think that's the right thing to do. But I know we will be getting updates. I'd like to get, you know, the head of the game and say, what are we going to do different in the next two years compared to the last two years, especially, you know, access goal number one and goal number two? And who's responsible for achieving those goals? Please.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'll answer that question, because I think it, it's a good opportunity for you to understand the way we think about this and actually think about over the next two weeks whether and if you want to endorse our thinking. So the short answer to your question is, the, the committee talked about, and I was very clear with them, that I would assign one Vice President to each one of these priorities, and they would have authority to execute across the entire institution for that particular priority. So, for instance, access, which is an enrollment goal, Vice President DeLonge will be taking that for the next two years and be the college's point person on trying to chase those two goals. Retention will be Vice President Diamond. Completion will be Vice President Gonko, and transfer will be Vice President Neeland. And one of the things we learned in the first two years was, and you may recall this, we had a plan that was similar to this, and it had ambitious goals, and we had, I think, 16 strategies we tried to deploy to chase those goals. And what I learned, having tried some of those strategies myself, I led some of them, where there were too many strategies, not enough focus. And part of that was there were, if you recall, eight goals rather than the smaller number of goals here. And there were probably too many, too, too few, too, it wasn't clear enough who was responsible for chasing those goals particularly. So in this rendition of the plan, we kept it at two, two years, which was kind of intimidating, candidly, because if you look at most plans, it, but we did that on purpose to keep there being urgency. And then the plan is to be very clear about who is the reportable authority to execute strategies on these points. So, Mr. Chairman, what you can expect is that at any time you'd like to see it, suppose you say, hey, Russ, what are we doing on access? Vice President DeLonge and I should be able to report out to you the strategies that she's obligated to execute to chase these two goals. Or perhaps, if you're looking at completion, Vice President Gonko could come and talk to you about that. One other thing that we didn't do as well as I had hoped initially, but now we've started to make progress on, is a full rendition of how we're doing on the goals in a public dashboard. It took a while to get that up. It is up there now. I reported in detail about that at the State of the College. Rhonda, is the State of the College on YouTube?
Yes.
So if any of you want to see what I said three months ago about how we did on the first strategic plan, you're welcome to look at that. Or if you'd like the PowerPoint, I outline every single one of the goals from the last plan and how we did on them, which was the jumping-off point for the refinement of what we've had, what we have here. But that leads to the second point that I wanted you to know, Mr. Chairman, is one of the things we're trying to do in this second rendition is to increase focus by reducing the number of goals and reducing the number of people who have the actual hand in, in, in going forward. And I think Dr. Hill was, was, was very supportive of that idea. And then I'll finally just say to, to Trustee Mosib's point, these are ambitious goals. And in the first series of goals in the first two years, we didn't even meet half of our goals. And a lot of people were unhappy and worried about that. But what I, what I said was, the Board wanted us to, number one, have an ambitious set of goals and have a very short amount of time to build urgency and focus. They, I, I knew that you would be happy with one, the goals we met and concerned or questioned the goals we didn't meet, which is okay. But I also wanted the second plan to continue with the urgency associated with the two-year window and increase the focus with less goals so that we could see if we could refine and improve what we've done well and then possibly learn from what we haven't done well. But I will tell you, this is an ambitious goal, a series of goals. Can I tell you we'll accomplish all these? No. Do I, can I tell you, we will, we will launch and pursue strategic initiatives to go after these and either make progress or learn why we didn't make progress? I can assure you that. The last thing I'll just say about that is, I would challenge anyone in any higher education institution, including you all, to go find a plan who's got more critical clarity about what we're trying to do and why. And I'll tell you the reason why most of them don't. Because it's intimidating to say, here's what we're going to try and do, and put a metric behind it. Most institutions will say things that have very little ability to, to, to gauge what you're doing and measure what, and we just decided that with your support as a Board, we were going to be clear about that. And we recognize you're going to hold us to it, but we also know that, what we would ask you is that we're, we're at the vanguard of this in higher education. No one else does this. We hope not to ask for grace from you if we're not quite at where we want to be, but if we did ask for grace, it would be because we're, we're doing stuff that no other institution has tried.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, and thank you to all the committee members for their hard work. Next item, please.
Action items, citizen's wishes, citizen wishing to address the Board on agenda and non-agenda items for action. Who have submitted a blue card by 7:10 to the Secretary, may speak at this time. The Board may not be in position to respond to non-agenda items, so our speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or college employees. Please limit comments to three minutes. During those three minutes, the comments become personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Your public comment time may be interrupted or ended. We have one blue card from Daquan Wimmer, Winner, I'm sorry, who would like to speak to the Board about good stuff.
Most of y'all already recognized me from last time. I'm a student, I'm a student here at HFC in U of M Dearborn. Last time I came here was because of concerns I had about sidewalks and stuff like that. I'm, this is not the concerns. I've come here with some good things I've seen about HFC. Recently, I got a job at the Welcome Center on the third floor with a mission to do tours around campus. I'm proud to say we get more African-Americans and Mexican people coming for tours and stuff like that. I think we got a strong chance of meeting the goals and stuff here. We're doing our best up there, trying to get more people convinced to come. But I want to start off with all the good things. I noticed that, what I said to the Welcome Center before was unwalking. The Walk Center is flipping now. I see it's changing. It's making people feel more comfortable and more helpful. I think whatever highly done team and y'all amazing people up here did, it actually helped with the team up there. And Henry Ford is now flipping around to a good college. Like, I go to U of M Dearborn, and I don't say this about too many colleges too often. Y'all getting nothing better than U of M. I won't say better than sports-wise, but hey, close.
That wasn't in our strategy.
Another thing I liked about it is, I talked to some of our professors, well, our instructors, that you actually get to know your instructors here, and that's another thing. I don't have too many things to say about. Where U of M, we got lecture halls. You don't, your professors don't know, they don't just know by their face, like, oh, I've seen my boy in my class a couple times. Your professors actually know you at HFC. And I think HFC have really grown and changed since the last time I was here, and that's all I have to say.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments.
Much appreciated.
Next, are there any action items on this agenda which Board members or the President wish to discuss and vote on separately? If they are, we'll smooth these from the motion below. Recommended action, move to approve action items numbered one through three as recommended in this agenda.
So moved?
Support.
Motion was moved by Trustee McDonald, supported by Trustee Petchikoff. Are there any questions? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, please attach a unanimous vote in the room. Thank you. Next item, please.
Board of Trustees' business acknowledgements of correspondence.
Next item, please.
Board committee reports.
The Audit Committee did meet today, but we had a wonderful presentation by Dana, and so that's it.
Thank you. I think that's it on reports.
Oh, I do have one. So in, I'm sorry, on September 5th, 20th of this year, the Henry Ford Foundation meeting happened.
Thank you.
Last time, I did not have my laptop with my notes, so apologies. So at that meeting on September 5th, the balance was 22 million, and the endowment fund is at 18 million. Morgan Stanley, they were able to give us a report. They were keeping an eye on the September 18th Fed meeting. They were predicting a rate of .25 cut. It was actually a half, so their prediction was a little bit off. We did have a presentation as to the Community College Promise Guarantee and just let our Board members know what that entailed for, and what that meant for our college. And then Vice President Bass was also able to tell us that they are leaning into the alumni relations creation to engage more of our alumni back onto campus, and that we were able to close on one of the trusts that was in legal. And then I have two more, sorry. Also, speaking of the strategic plan, President Cavalluna and I were at ACCT, the Association of Community College Trustees, in Seattle, and we presented on, let's see, what was the name of the presentation? Data, Using Data to Drive Your Strategic Plan?
Data to Decision.
Yes, it was a lot of data. So we were, we had a packed house. So we were able to share as to how we utilized data in this specific instance for increasing graduation rate and how that came through the strategic plan. It happened to, we had a lot of questions afterwards, a lot of follow-up from, I'm sure President Cavalluna, and from the Presidents, and I had also from trustees as to what that looked like and how they can get their Board on, on board as well, so that everyone has the same sort of goals for their college. And it happened to be the week of, one of the games, and so I would be remiss to who won that game. I think it was Michigan, but...
Oh, was that a week Michigan won? There's only been five or six?
I was able to insert the team, the team, the team for our new team member over there. But it was a great presentation. We had a lot of engagement. It was, it was great to be able to talk to trustees from all around the country. But it just went back to the strategic plan, and I think most of the college, like President Cavalluna, most of them do not have strategic, and they were kind of in awe as to how you can make it just one page and they get very simplistic. So it was definitely eye-opening that what we have here is somewhat unique and that other colleges have no idea what we're talking about. And they stayed, and we stayed probably for a half an hour, speaking to many of the individuals there. And then one more thing, and this will be later on, but the ACCT, they have classes. Obviously, there's one in Seattle. You can kind of go and go up various other classes and pick which one you'd want to learn more about. But they have now created, with Michigan, the MCCA, Michigan Community College Association, has brought ACCT here to Lansing. And I'll send you that email, but it'll be December 5th through 6th. So ACCT will be here in Lansing, those two days in Lansing, Crown, Lansing, I believe. And then it is for new trustees, it's for existing trustees, but if you don't want to travel and get on an airplane to take advantage of those classes, they're going to be in our backyard to help them and help you. That's it.
That's it? Thank you. Trustee Donald?
Yeah, I'd just like to roll off of your comments for a moment, Trustee Watts. I did a presentation with Glenn on the strategic plan at the P-12 several years ago, and it was the same thing. People were just dumbfounded that we were able to get such a concise strategic plan on one page. And I just, it was eye-opening, like you said, and I just have to say that I am so proud of both teams that we were able to do that, because not only, I've seen so many times where a strategic plan gets produced and gets stood on the shelf. It's a five-year-long plan, nobody pays any attention to it, but both at the college and the district, it's simplified, everybody knows that it's posted all over. And with the district, too, we're able to, anything that we have, we align it with that plan.
Everything in the agenda.
Yeah, in the agenda, everything. And it just gets everyone that front of mind and rowing in the right direction. So I just...
And using it.
And using it. And it's, it is a, it's a document that actually guides the college and the district. So I am very proud of all the work on both teams that have gone into this, and I think it's phenomenal. And like you said, people are just amazed. And it's simplistic, and it's user-friendly, and I just have to, again, just compliment the teams that worked on it.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Request for information in our future agenda items?
Trustee Mosib?
Yeah, since we're discussing the Black African-American students on our campus and Hispanic students on our campus... and Hispanic students on our campus, is it possible if we can get a report on the current demographics of our campus as far as the markup of students by race and also by first-generation students, if they identify as such?
Yes, and I can, I'll circulate that to the board.
President Cavalluna, would you add gender list as well?
Yes.
Anybody else? Thank you. Next item, please.
Board member commentary?
Trustee Cavalluna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say that I do see one of your future colleagues in our audience today. I see trustee-elect Jamal Aljamie, he's here. I appreciate him attending our board meeting tonight. I will also say that I had a good interaction with him, the chair of our board and the vice chair, complying with our bylaws that require us to offer new trustees orientation, which we did last week. Poor Mr. Aljamie probably had more information than he probably deserved about a half a year.
That's because I was there.
But I appreciate his interest in the board, and that's the only, I'm not a board member, but I'm ex officio board member. Those are the only comments I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I was going to mention that, but the information we gave him didn't scare him away. He's here tonight, so thank you for attending. Anybody else under commentary? My favorite, week of the year, it's all about family, Thanksgiving. I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Go Lions. Next item, please.
Future meeting dates, Monday, December 2nd, 2024, P-12 Board Education Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center and Frank Franchi Boardroom. Monday, December 9th, 2024, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Meeting, 6:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center, Services and Conference Center in the Covenant Conference Room. Monday, December 9th, 2024, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center on Rhode Mountain.
Thank you very much, and we have enjoyed.